Would you say they got a hand for the third year in a row?
Yeah.
Then we got all three, three prepared reading.
She's covered.
But I think so.
She's already covered.
Then we got it nailed down. You better use your field trip today.
Good to go.
All right, well then get started then. A call to order, Pecoson City School Board meeting for March 15th, 2011. We'll start off with our call to order pledge to the flag and inspirational reading tonight. Would you introduce the students, please?
Avery Pender will lead us in the pledge. Avery is in fifth grade at Pecoson Elementary School. She is on the AB honor roll. Her favorite subject is math. She loves to play sports, especially basketball and tennis. One of her favorite pastimes is skateboarding. Avery is into weather. She is also worried about the weather in Pecoson and after classes, to help her better understand it, she has decided she wants to be a weather girl someday. And her favorite food is chicken nuggets.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Oh, please join us for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Liam McCann is giving an inspirational reading entitled, "He is a fourth grade tag student at Pecoson Elementary School. Liam loves science and playing the recorder. His favorite activities include playing basketball with friends and playing weed. Today is Liam's 10th birthday and we are sorry to say we will be saying goodbye to him as his family is moving to New Albany, Ohio."
When George Washington was a little boy, he lived on a farm in Virginia. His father taught him to ride and he used to take young George about the farm with him so that his son might learn how to take care of the fields and horses and cattle when he grew older. Mr. Washington had planted an orchard of fine fruit trees. There were apple trees, peach trees, pear trees, plum trees, and cherry trees. Once, a particularly fine cherry tree was sent to him from across the ocean. Mr. Washington planted it on the edge of the orchard. He told everyone on the farm to watch it carefully to see that it was not broken or hurt in any way. It grew well and one spring it was covered with white blossoms. Mr. Washington was pleased to think that he would soon have cherries from the little tree. Just about this time, George was given a shiny new hatchet. George took it and went about chopping sticks, hacking into the rails of fences, and cutting whatever else he passed. At last, he came to the edge of the orchard and thinking only of how well his hatchet could cut, he chopped into the little cherry tree. The bark was soft and it cut so easily that George chopped the tree right down and then went on with his play. That evening, when Mr. Washington came from inspecting the farm, he sent his horse to the sable and walked down to the orchard to look at his cherry tree. He stood in amazement when he saw how it was cut. Who would have dared do such a thing? He asked everyone, but no one could tell him anything about it. Just then George passed by. "George," his father said in an angry voice, "do you know who killed my cherry tree?" This was a tough question and George staggered under it for a moment but quickly recovered. "I cannot tell a lie, Father," he said. "I did it with my hatchet." Mr. Washington looked at George. The boy's face was white, but he looked straight into his father's eyes. "Go into the house, son," said Mr. Washington sternly. George went into the library and waited for his father. He was very unhappy and very much ashamed. He knew he had been foolish and thoughtless and that his father was right to be displeased. Soon, Mr. Washington came into the room. "Come here, my boy," he said. George went over to his father. Mr. Washington looked at him long and steadily. "Tell me, son, why did you cut the tree?" "I was playing and I did not think," George stammered. "And now the tree will die. We shall never have any cherries from it. But worse than that, you have failed to take care of the tree when I asked you to do so." George's head was bent and his cheeks were red from shame. "I am sorry, Father," he said. Mr. Washington put his hand on the boy's shoulder. "Look at me," he said. "I am sorry to have lost my cherry tree, but I'm glad that you were brave enough to tell me the truth. I would rather have you truthful and brave than to have a whole orchard full of the finest cherry trees. Never forget that, my son." George Washington never did forget. To the end of his life, he was just as brave and honorable as he was that day as a little boy. This story inspired me to tell the truth because if George Washington did not tell the truth, his father would have been even more upset when he found out that George actually did cut the tree down. So this story did help me to tell the truth.
Avery, thank you for starting us off this evening and Liam, happy birthday to you. Thank you for the story. It was a good reminder. All right, our next item tonight will be our student presentations and I'd like to ask if the students, after that we'll have a few more items on the agenda, but if you would stick around after the presentation, we'll be taking a short recess and we want to be able to come down and talk to the students that have presented tonight and also received the recognitions. So the student presentation tonight is on earthquake simulation. Ian Burris, Julie Ellis, and Kristy O'Day are members of Ms. Gillet... um, excuse me, Ms. Gilletti?
Gilletli.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Ms. Gilletti?
Gilletli.
Gilletli. It's fifth grade class at Pecoson Elementary School. These students will be doing a presentation on earthquake simulation. In science, students were studying the SOL topic, earth patterns, cycles, and change, while learning about what happens at the three different types of plate boundaries. Earthquakes occur at transformed boundaries, so students participated in an earthquake simulation. As part of a special construction company, students helped design a model skyscraper. Their goal was to assemble an earthquake safe structure that was at least 20 inches tall. Then each company tested their skyscraper under earthquake conditions. Building supplies included popsicle sticks, bamboo skewers, straws, tape, and modeling clay. In light of the recent tragedy in Japan, it is very clear that the students were learning concepts that the Japanese engineers used which resulted in the saving of countless lives last week. Our thoughts go out to the Japanese people as they struggle to overcome the challenges they face. As we continue to prepare our students to be global citizens, we hope that they will one day use their skills to prevent additional tragedies.
Thank you. We have California, Japan, Greece, New Zealand, Arkansas, Hawaii, and my classroom. What do all those places have in common?
They have all been through an earthquake in the past 30 days.
Thank you, ladies. That's right, and the epicenter of our earthquake was focused on these two SOLs for math and science. As part of a special construction company, my class was broken into six groups and they were... their goal was to build at least a 20-inch model skyscraper. Now, they had important rules and guidelines that they had to follow. They had to use the supplies that they were given. Their goal was to build it at least 20 inches tall. They had a blueprint that they had to plan the structure before they started building. And they wrote in a construction log each day to tell the progress that their group had made and they all worked as a team. Now, the jobs, my students are going to tell you what their specific job was.
I was a contractor and what I did is I made sure everything went according to plan. I also helped build the skyscraper.
My job was materials manager and I made sure that the supplies were used properly and I also had to keep track of how much supplies we used and how many supplies were left over.
Now, we had a four-day project. On the first day, groups were formed. And also on the first day, we read about what made a structure safe during an earthquake. We watched actual footage from the great San Francisco 1989 earthquake, so the students got to see firsthand what happened and what kind of damage was done. We also watched a video on what makes a structure safe during an earthquake and what supports can be put in and what shapes can be used in the building. We started drawing the blueprint after that and we filled in our construction log. Day two is when we finished our blueprint. We estimated about how much supplies each building would need. We started building and we updated our construction log. On day three, we finished building. We took an inventory of supplies. Each group got to choose a special construction company name and again, the construction log was updated for the day. Day four was our earthquake. And after earthquakes, we compared the structures and made final recommendations for future buildings that could have been built, what made buildings safe and what shapes we used that were successful and all parts of the project were turned in. On this last day, the project was evaluated and my students are going to tell you what their favorite part of the project was.
My favorite part of this project was shaking the dust to make an earthquake. I found it interesting to see what structures could withstand a 20-second earthquake.
My favorite part in this project was watching an actual earthquake on video because I had never witnessed or been through something as disastrous as an earthquake.
And the earthquakes that we had, we had six altogether and they lasted 20 seconds each. So 120 seconds of earthquakes. And now they're going to tell you our company names. Go ahead.
Wheeler Skyscraper Company. Sponsored by...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Bunting Incorporated.
Skyscraper of the Future.
Sunshine Incorporated.
Sponsored by Christie Cream.
It's me.
Prestige World Ride.
The SJSU Company.
And this is our entire group.
We are all having fun after the disastrous earthquake that hit our class. All the smiles.
So we had four days of this project and my students want to tell you what they learned after those four days.
During this project, I learned that building under construction will most likely not survive a 20-second earthquake. I learned that the hard way because my group did not finish the building and ours fell over in the first seven seconds of the earthquake.
I learned that the triangle is the strongest polygon and that if you use it in your structure, it has a higher chance of withstanding an earthquake.
All right, we'll now move to additions and/or modifications to the agenda. Do we have any this evening?
We do not.
And then we'll move right into recognitions. First, I'd like to ask Ms. Andrea Forrest to please come up for a presentation to our art teachers from the Pecoson Art League.
Can I have the art teachers, please? On behalf of the Pecoson Art League, I would like to present each school with a check for $500 for their art departments.
All right, now we have a few recognitions for some of our high school students. Dr. Parrish, if you would take us into that.
Yes, we have a number of recognitions tonight. I'd like to start first with Allstate Chorus. So as Mr. Diggs moves to the podium, first I'd like to welcome up to the podium Becca Brinkley. Becca, is she here? Yes. Becca, a senior, is a soprano to Allstate delegate. She has been very active in show choir for all four years of high school. After making district chorus, she made delegate for Allstate. After high school, she plans to attend Virginia Commonwealth University, majoring in elementary education with a minor in music theater. Please join me in congratulating Becca Brinkley for being appointed to Allstate Chorus. Brianna Skalut, is she here? Brianna has been in show choir for all four years of high school. She was a choreographer for Sound Station's show last year as well as a ballad of this year's show. Brianna has consistently made district chorus and is first alternate for Allstate Soprano I. Her involvement in the music program at Pecoson High School has led her decision to become a Mr. Spruill or a Mr. Bombow as next year she will major in music education at Virginia Commonwealth University. Please join me in congratulating Brianna. On a personal note, I'm just glad to see we have all this interest in teaching in the future. Next, Sean Hopkins. Sean, a senior, has been in choir and band for all four years of high school. He's also been first chair euphonium in the symphonic band all four years. He's been in the jazz choir since freshman year and last year attended Allstate Choir. He's attended honors choir this year. Along with symphonic band, he is the low brass section leader in the marching band, member of the jazz band, and president of the band council. He plans to attend James Madison University, majoring in music industry with a focus on voice. Please join me in congratulating Sean Hopkins. And I'm actually going to have Sean stay up there because he's also being recognized now for the All Virginia Band. And now if Elizabeth Remchuk could join us up here? Elizabeth has been playing French horn for seven years. In her sophomore year of high school, she was placed in the symphonic band and was selected outstanding sophomore band student that year. She has made district band for the past three years and this year ranked fourth in the district, which allowed her the opportunity to audition for the All Virginia Band. During the fall, she is involved with the Islander Marching Band. She played flugelhorn and served as a section leader during both her junior and senior years. This year, she was a featured solist in the band's performance of Pictures during an exhibition by Muzakorski. She plans to attend Virginia Tech this fall in a music education and music performance double major. She hopes one day to either be a professional French horn player or a band director. Please join me in congratulating Elizabeth. Thank you. We also are awarding or recognizing two students who have been recognized by the National Alliance for Young Artists and Writers with a Gold Key Art Award. This evening Jessica Evans is unable to attend, so we are going to invite her back to our next meeting and recognize her at that meeting, but I would ask that Julia West come forward, Julia is involved in Advanced Placement Studio Art. She participated in the Cruisi-Salu Art Exhibit as an artist and is currently the curator. Her extracurricular activities include dance, ballet, and her church tech nine worship team. She's a member of the newspaper club, which won the VHSL Regional Publications Championship Trophy Class Newspaper. She received honorable mention for graphics. She's also a sidewalk council for Life Ministries, a professional caricature artist, a portrait artist, and a face painter. Please join me in congratulating Julia on her Gold Key Art Award. Congratulations to all of our students this evening for those recognitions that they've so well earned.
All right, we're going to take a short recess now and we'll be back on the air
What happened?
Oh, you mean just us tonight?
Look at you two. Hey, you shocked too.
All right, we're ready to get started again. All right, we'll move on to our next item now, to the presentations and reports. I'm going to start off with our financial update. Mr. Bill Bowen.
Good evening Chairman Diggs, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I'm pleased to report that staff has completed its work on superintendent's proposed budget for 2012. The superintendent will be presenting her proposed budget in the work session immediately following this meeting. If you recall, when we began the budget process, there were two budgets we were working with, the 2012 budget, but we're also working with revisions to the 2011 budget, the current fiscal year. Due to the very tight budget calendar and the statutory requirements relating to the FY12 budget, staff has not completed its work on the FY11 revisions. However, since the General Assembly has completed its work, it appears that the cuts for FY11 will be lower than what was reported at the January meeting. We reported cuts could be as high as 140,000. We expect the cuts not to be higher than 100,000. But once we complete that work, we will bring a budget amendment to the board for your consideration to consider revisions to the FY11 budget. And that's the finance presentation this evening.
Board, any questions for Mr. Bowen? Thank you very much. All right, next item then will be our operations update. Mr. Steve Pappas.
Good evening Chairman Diggs, school board, Dr. Parrish. As you know, last month we discussed that we had received three separate state and federal audits of our food service and as I had elucidated last month, we were successful in the first of those and that we were waiting for the remaining two. I'm pleased to report that we heard from the USDA commodities folks, the federal government, that we were successful. We had a glowing letter from them. And we still await our third and final audit results and I will illuminate you on that once we get them. In the area of safety, today, as many of you know, all of our schools participated in the statewide tornado drill. I was at the middle school and they did a superb job there. Everyone was in position and it was obvious that students and faculty took the drill in the spirit it was intended. And lastly, the chiller, as we progress through our boiler and chiller installation. You know, we installed the boiler several months ago. We've been waiting for the chiller. The chiller came. I believe you saw some pictures associated with that. Maintenance has been working diligently to make all of the electrical and mechanical connections and during the spring break, we're going to have a factory-supervised startup. So we'll have chiller and we'll culminate that boiler-chiller replacement project. And that's my report.
Board, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Pappas. We'll move into instructional updates.
Chairman Diggs, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I wanted to bring out a tool this evening and it's... Dr. Parrish was a little concerned when she saw me bringing it down the stairs, but I know we've talked a bit about earthquakes and tornadoes, but this tool is very eloquent in what it's... how it is analogous to what I'm going to speak with you about tonight. Because when I was growing up, my dad, who was a very handy man, said that if the only tool in your toolbox is a hammer, then every task that you undertake will look like a nail. Because that's what this is designed to work with. And tonight I want to talk to you a little bit about the fact of how we don't see every student as a nail. We see every student as being a unique individual and so therefore it's important that we not just have a hammer in our toolbox. And so from a technology standpoint, we've been working quite a bit to put computers in our classrooms and to build our network, but we also have been working to introduce some smaller tools, some smaller devices into our toolkit. And I wanted to share a little bit with you tonight about what some of those smaller tools are and how we're using them because I'm not sure... and how we're using them, because I'm not sure that everyone is aware of those uses. So first, in this digital revolution that we're a part of, many of you may have heard of iPods. And iPods are something that we have acquired in our school division. It's not like we've got one for every student. In fact, probably many of our students have their own. But we've been using them. And Mrs. Feldman is here this evening, particularly with some of our special needs students. Because we can use them, because some of our students have some communication disorders. And by using the iPod, we're able to download some applications and allow them to enhance their ability to communicate, not only with their teachers, but more importantly, to communicate with others. We use it as a part of our community-based instructional program. So that if they go to a restaurant and maybe they have a hard time speaking, they can actually use their iPods in order to communicate. Or if they go to a grocery store. So again, this is a device that's pervasive in our society that is, has a very low stigma attached to it, as opposed to walking around with like a tape recorder or a big figure board that you draw pictures on. It's a device that's very common in our society and that our students are very comfortable using. Another way that we're using an iPod is we sometimes have students who have language barriers in the sense that they, their native language is not English. And I'm thinking in particular, we've had a couple of students who've come into our school division whose native language is something other than, say like Spanish or French or German, where we have kind of an inherent language base. And we've been able to use our iPods to download language translation programs that they are able then to use as they move from class to class. And it allows them to better engage and understand the instruction that our teachers are providing. In addition to iPods, we procured a few iPads. And you can notice, I keep saying a few of this, because we're trying to be very judicious with the use of funds to make sure that we're acquiring these devices and making sure that we can use them to really make a difference in instruction before we come to you and say, we'd like to just buy everybody a device. So we're using iPods with some of our challenged students who the iPods are not effective, because these are some of our most challenged students. And not only do they have language issues, they also have some mobility issues in some of their motor skills. And because the iPad is a larger screen and it has the ability to be touched, the use of graphics and that touchscreen option is enhancing their ability to communicate with their teachers and again, with the other individuals that they work with. And that's making a huge difference for a large portion of our special needs population. We also have one of our speech pathologists who was very fortunate to receive a PEF grant recently, a mini grant. And she's using one of the iPods, excuse me, one of the iPads that we have. And she is being able to acquire some applications or apps, as we affectionately call them. And she's able to take that from classroom to classroom as she works with students. It has speech fluency software on it. And she's able to record their progress. And it's just very portable. So we're really excited that she's been able to use that device. The other new advent of devices that we are adding to our school division is the primary school is acquiring some NOOCs. Those little small kind of Kindle-like NOOC devices. And they also are going to get some eBooks or e-readers and are going to be using that in the first and second grade classrooms. And they're going to be cycled through with the teachers. Again, this was offset, part of the cost was offset by our PEF mini grants. And so we're very excited again that our PEF has been so supportive of our schools. And at the middle school, they are going to be getting some NOOCs. And they're going to start what's called a NOOC club. Kind of like what many of us, when we were in school, there might have been a book club. They are going to have a NOOC club. And what the research is telling us that, is that a lot of students are not doing so much leisure reading. So we're trying to use the devices that they have a real sense in alignment and really are comfortable with to enhance and encourage our students to read as they continue through our schools. So we're really excited again about these little small little introductions that we're making into the use of portable devices. And so hopefully, you can see, we're expanding our toolkit. So like I said at the beginning, every student isn't a nail and every tool we use isn't a hammer. But we are now beginning to put some other tools in our toolkit. I'm very excited because it's making a difference for our students. And that's my presentation.
Board, any questions? Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move into the consent agenda section of our agenda. And we have five items this evening. We'll read through those. First item is approval of minutes of the February regular meeting and work sessions. And those are enclosed in our package. We have approval of the financial reports, also enclosed. Personnel action, that's enclosed. Authorization to accept and expend funds carried over from the VSPA School Educational Technology Notes Series X is enclosed. And finally, authorization to accept and expend additional funds received as part of Title I, No Child Left Behind, and Perkins Grants. I have, make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you please poll the board?
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Diggs?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of four to zero.
All right, now we'll move into other matters of consideration. And we have approval for the proclamation for National Library Week, April 16th, excuse me, April 10th through the 16th. And I'm going to, we have one this week, so I'm going to read this proclamation and then we'll have a motion, please. National Library Week for April 10th through 16th, 2011. Whereas libraries provide free access to all, from books and online resources for families to library business centers that help support entrepreneurship and retraining. And whereas our national schools' libraries, as well as other academic, public and special libraries, make a difference in the lives of millions of Americans today. And whereas librarians are trained professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn and work in a challenging economy. And whereas libraries are helping level the playing field for job seekers, with 88 percent of public libraries providing access to job databases and other online resources. And whereas libraries are places of opportunity, providing programs that teach all forms of literacy, promoting continuing education and encouraging lifelong learners. And whereas in times of economic hardship, Americans turn to and depend on their libraries and librarians. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on the 15th day of March in the year 2011 by the School Board of the City of Pecosin, Virginia, that the week of April 10th through 16th, 2011, be hereby celebrated as National Library Week in all Pecosin City public schools. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
I'll make the motion. I move that we approve April 10th through 16th as National Library Week.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments?
Libraries are great for everybody.
I'll just say, I really do appreciate all the work that our librarians and the services that they provide, the people that we have coming in support. I know there's a lot of volunteer work. People come in to help our students, both here, the local library and our school libraries. And it's just another tool that we use for the non-nail type children. Could you please poll the board?
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Chairman Diggs?
Aye.
The motion carried by a vote of four to zero.
All right, that will move us into our public comment section. Do we have any valid comment this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, we'll move into communications. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, first I'd like to thank the Art League for the donations they made to our schools today. Just yet another example of how supportive the community is of our schools and certainly during these challenging financial times. Any assistance we get is very helpful. As Mr. Bowen mentioned, I will be presenting my proposed budget for fiscal year 12 in the work session. But I did want to let the community know that I am going to all of our schools tomorrow to present the budget to each of our faculties. And I will also have my presentation recorded. And we should have that online and running on the TV channel by Thursday evening. So it'll be very available for everyone to see it. And I would encourage people, if they have questions or comments or concerns, to certainly call board members, give me a call. And in it will have the outline of our budget timeline. We will have a public hearing on the budget on March 21st. And all that information will be in that presentation as well. That public hearing will be here in this room at 5:30. I want to thank everybody we've received again for the third year running, quite a bit of feedback, especially from faculty and staff from across the division, as well as from community members. I had numerous meetings and communications with, I know, our PTA and PTO presidents who were communicating with their organizations and getting information back to me and then out into the public, and also working and presenting to civic groups as well. So I just thank you, because this really was a community effort as we developed this budget in what once again was a very challenging year. And we know we are going to face challenges in the coming years as well. So I thank you. And then just a note of thanks to Mr. Bowen. As he indicated, his staff just finished up that budget for us for the presentation. It was quite a bit of work, some long weekends and evenings over the course of the past week. So I thank him for all of that work. The community members watching TV may notice that Mr. Bellamy is not with us. He has resigned from the board. And I do want to wish him all the best. He's engaged in a new, very exciting opportunity for him. I thank all of him for all of the work and energy and enthusiasm that he brought to the board. And we will miss him. And I believe that city council is now busy looking for a new board member for us. So the last thing I want to say is by the time we meet again here at a regular board meeting, we're going to have a couple of board meetings before, but we will have had spring break. So I do wish everybody a very happy spring break. I think by the time it comes, everybody will be ready for it. So with that, that ends my comments for this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. This Thursday, March 17th, is Pecosin Primary's huge art show and book fair from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Seven Pecosin Kiwanis Club members came and read to the students at the Pecosin Primary School on March 2nd to commemorate Dr. Seuss's birthday. Kindergarten registration began last week and continues throughout the month. So anyone in the community who has a child that will turn five by September 30th, 2011, should come and register his or her child. March 7th and 8th was first grade's wonderful music program entitled "The Rainbow Connection." Thank you to the Pecosin Primary PTO for a new cement play area where the students can practice jumping rope, hopscotch and playing basketball. At the elementary school, the Battle of the Books team will compete March 19th. Interim reports were sent out Friday, March 11th. And there is a movie night at Cinema Cafe to view Mars Needs Moms at 4:30 and is also tonight at 7:00 p.m. Tomorrow, March 16th, the PTO is holding two different mystery slide shows at 8:30 a.m. and 9:40 a.m. March 23rd is the Spring Bus Exit Drill. Festival of the Arts is March 24th, which entails a school-wide art exhibit, artist and craftsman demonstration, readers, theater and other arts-centered activities. And Spring Pictures at the elementary schools will be Tuesday, April 12th. The Builders Club at the middle school is collecting change for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Pennies for Patients campaign. Sixth grade students attended a field trip at Jefferson Lab today. The middle school's PTO is sponsoring a fun-packed activity night on Friday, March 25th, from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. The 27-week tests begin Tuesday, March 22nd. And you can check out high school for the complete schedule. The middle school is hosting a blood drive for the American Red Cross on Wednesday, April 27th, between 2:30 p.m. and 7:30 p.m. Congratulations to some, to eighth grade students for representing the Pecosin Middle School at this past weekend's Tidewater Science Fair. Pecosin High School's band earned a superior rating at Band Festival, which made them state honor band three years in a row. Spirit Week is this week at Pecosin High School. And the Sadie Hawkins Dance is this Saturday, March 19th, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Key Club is also sponsoring the blood drive on March 24th from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Games begin this week for spring sports. At this past weekend show choir competition, Garnet and Gold placed second and Sound Station placed third. And spring break is April 4th through 8th.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say I enjoyed Leon McCann's book that he read about George Washington and the importance of honesty. That was wonderful to hear some, that's some character development. And I was able to take the day off of work today to go with Pecosin Middle School sixth graders to Jefferson Lab. And that was a great experience. I said the guy was like the next Bill Nye. He was really entertaining and the kids had a blast and learned a lot. So that was a great field trip. And I was just thinking that our time is coming, that we're going to be talking about in our work session about a new student rep for next year. And it's going to be hard for this one to go. But if there's anybody that's out there that's interested, we'd like to get the word out that that time of the year is coming. So we will be looking for a new student rep for next year.
Oh, I'd like to wish all the teachers a very enjoyable spring break. Don't work too hard. Have a break. And I'd also like to thank the budding young artists who decorated all of our invitations. We have invitations to the primary school thing here on Thursday evening in celebration of the arts. And mine has the essentials of the sunshine, the sky, the grass and the Easter bunny. And I think it's a cross between a Picasso and a Rembrandt. I'm not real sure. But we all have different ones and they're nicely decorated. So please tell the students thank you.
I'd like to report that last week I attended the School Health Advisory Board and listened to updates from PE teachers and the nurses. And I would like to say, Nurse Riggins is the, reported that it was a very busy winter. There were many illnesses, runny noses, respiratory illnesses that they had to deal with. And I just wanted to thank all the nurses. It was even more, she said, than last year when they had the H1N1 scare. So I appreciate what they're doing. And I would also like to say that there is a parent position on the board. And if you, if any parent out there is interested in this position, just contact the school board office. I would also like to report, I attended the WHRO Educational Advisory Committee meeting today at lunchtime with Dr. Parrish. We had a presentation for some of the digital education development that they were, that they are doing. And that was very interesting. Of course, they are having budget woes and we feel their pain. And I think that wraps it up.
I'd like to second something Dr. Parrish said. Mark Bellamy is definitely going to be missed on the board. I wish him very well in his new endeavors. Will miss his input and his insights. So I just wanted to make sure he hears that from us, that he's going to be missed and as he moves on. I want to also thank PEF. We, every, every meeting, we seem to be hearing about some of the excellent work that PEF and those that support Pecosin Education Foundation, what they're doing for this community. And I'd like to, I know we have it scheduled at some point. I'd like to look at what that schedule is so that we can make sure that we have somebody here representing PEF so we can thank them in person in the future. Particularly with the way the economy is and the way our budgets are, as we're about to go in and hear some more about this, the way the community comes together to support the kids here. It's just another great example of how the community pours themselves into these students. And that's just very encouraging to hear each, each board meeting, how they're stepping in and helping to fill that gap. With that, I'm going to finish my comments. And we will move into a work session after we do the adjournment. And we have three items on the work session tonight. We have the presentation of the superintendent's budget for FY12, process for selection of the school board student representative and a new Horizons board representative. So with that, we are adjourned.